We'll call this meeting order. This is the Mainland Planning Commission, twelve to twenty-five meeting. Let's start with our invocation and pledge.
Heavenly Father would come at this time to tell you thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. We thank you, oh God, for allowing us to assemble in this place one more time. We ask you, oh God, your blessings upon this meeting. We pray that you would give us the guidance and the wisdom that we need to make the proper decisions for our community. And we pray, oh God, that you will let the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable in thy sight, oh Lord, our strength and our redeemer. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no beginning, justice for all. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming. I have to do some housekeeping right off and read the meeting procedures. We got to review those. The planning staff presents the application request to the Planning Commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to represent their requests to the Planning Commission. It is the responsibility of applicants to make presentations on request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings. Public comments on public hearing items will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the allotted time. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Okay, one thing that I need to bring to everybody's attention is we don't have a county attorney present tonight, but we do have Mr. Aaron Mumford online. I think it's by teams. So if we have any questions for Mr. Mumford. Mr. Mumford, can you hear me?
I can. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. All right. Do we have any announcements? Commission announcements?
You mean Commissioner Stephanie Lee, Planning and Zoning Director. I just have one. I just wanted to let you all know, we did inform you via email as well. We have put out press releases. We are having some town halls coming up for the zoning and subdivision regulations update. So they're starting next week. The first one is December eighth from six to eight PM across the street in the Pate Building in room two-two-four. The next one is a daytime meeting. It'll be December tenth from two to four, also in the Pate Building. And then coming up in January, on January twelfth, we'll be on St. Simon's Island from both two to four PM and also from six to eight PM, all on January twelfth in the Casino Building, room one-oh-eight. And the format for these town halls is there will be a presentation by county planning zoning staff outlining some of the changes from the current codes to the proposed ordinances. And then there will be an opportunity for the public to make comment. And then that will be followed up with staff being available to help people individually with any individual questions. So that'll be kind of the format of all these town halls. And if someone's interested, they can attend any of these town halls. They will all be generally the same format. There may be different questions asked, the different comments mentioned, but the presentations will all be the same. So someone can go to just, just one out of the four if they would like that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. All right, let's start with general business. We need to approve the minutes of the Mainland Planning Commission meeting held November fourth, twenty-twenty-five, subject to any necessary changes or corrections. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend to approve the meetings November fourth, twenty-twenty-five as submitted.
All right, I got a motion. I need a second.
Second.
All right, I got several seconds. Ms. Page, second, and is there any discussion amongst commissioners? Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? All right, six-zero. We have one commissioner absent tonight. All right, add on the one-point-two, review proposed twenty-twenty-six Mainland Planning Commission meeting date calendar. We somewhat, okay, we got it. All right, commissioners, how do those dates look to you?
So far, so good.
I expect a birthday cake on the eleventh of August.
That's your birthday?
Yeah.
All right, we'll get it. Remember that, Ms. Lee.
That'll be a wedding anniversary twenty-five. I'm not sure I'll be here.
Okay, on the alarm. Yes, sir. I understand that also. So you gonna miss the birthday cake.
Probably so.
Okay, all right, sir. All right, commissioners. We need a motion to adopt.
No, sir. You don't need to vote on anything. So the Board of Commissioners will do their work for this item. Just if you have any recommendations or changes on any dates.
Okay, yes, sir.
That is all you have to do.
All right. So we going to send those dates to the county commission? Make sure they agree with all those dates. All right, let's move right on to one-point-three, ZM dash twenty-five dash twenty-eight, Southwest Glen Residential Rezone. Consideration of a change for rezone request from Forest Agricultural to General Residential to allow up to seven-hundred-and-forty-eight residential lots on a two-hundred-and-eleven acre portion of parcel zero-two dash zero-one seven-four-four at fifteen-seventy-two Buck Swamp Road. Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Warehouser Forest Holdings Incorporated, on. All right, talk to us, Ms. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Christina Wright, Senior Planner. Just to recap quickly from the public hearing we had last month, ZM twenty-five twenty-eight is that request to rezone from FA to GR, General Residential, on that two-hundred-and-eleven acre portion of the property at fifteen-seventy-two Buck Swamp Road. Here is a map indicating that parcel, as well as in the orange shaded portion is that two-hundred-and-eleven acre portion of the parcel. As you can see, the property is located to the north of Buck Swamp Road, in the vicinity of the lakeside at Longwood Subdivision. Here is the character area map indicating that it is within the southwest Glen character area, which includes the requested GR, General Residential zoning classification, which is considered a compatible zoning classification within that character area. Here's the image looking south from the property, image looking into the property, as well as the images to the east and west along Buck Swamp Road. So just to kind of summarize, justification for the request, the applicant has indicated that the request to rezone would be in harmony with the character of the neighborhood, very simply because of the consistency and compatibility with the single-family residential use, which is also the proposed use for this iteration as well. Here is that revised sketch plan, considerably difference from the last time in that the number of units have decreased to six-hundred-and-thirty-three, and the lot sizes, the minimum lot size, has increased to eight thousand square feet. In terms of findings, the current Forest Agricultural zoning classification would allow up to four-hundred-and-twenty-two, four-hundred-and-twenty-two dwelling units, or a density of two dwelling units per acre by right. If approved, the requested underlying GR, General Residential zoning classification could, in theory, allow up to ten dwelling units per acre. However, the revised request is for six-hundred-and-thirty-three homes, or a density of three dwelling units per acre, which is based on gross acreage, or a difference of one dwelling unit per acre from what is allowed by right with the Forest Agricultural zoning classification. The applicant has indicated there may be a need for some flexibility. So a three-point-eight dwelling unit per acre net is what we typically measure density by, which would produce a difference of one-point-eight dwelling units per acre. So here is the zoning comparison summary chart. As you can see, the primary differences between these two zoning classifications are that FA, of course, allows a twenty-thousand square foot lot. The requested zoning is for the eight-thousand-square-foot lot. Other changes include, the, well, between the two differences are sixty and thirty-five feet for height, and then, of course, the maximum density difference being two dwelling units per acre for FA, and/or three dwelling units per acre gross, or three-point-eight dwelling units per acre net for the request that the applicant has made. So this time, in your packet, you have this CRC report, which last time was pending prior to the BOC hearing, but you do have that report. And so basically, their recommendation was for water conservation is a key planning priority in coastal Georgia, particularly in support of long-term, long-term resource stewardship. The CRC strongly encourages the use of native or drought-tolerant landscaping, recommends the applicant review the coastal Georgia regional plan to ensure best practices for water efficiency. Landscaping, stormwater management are incorporated into the overall site design. Also, the CRC recommends that the governing authority carefully evaluate the potential impacts on the wetlands and traffic volume. So with that, here are your possible motions. And if you all are so inclined to consider a motion to recommend approval, we have a motion there that includes that single-family home requirement, as well as the eight-thousand-square-foot minimum lot size on the two-hundred-and-eleven acre portion of the property. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Ms. Wright?
I just have a question about the general area. I had someone tell me, not somebody in authority, but I'm just curious about this, that the county does have plans for additional traffic signals on, or with DOT on the Buck Swamp Highway seventeen intersection, and also where the two places southport comes out. Are you aware of any of that?
I do not have that information at this time.
All right, any additional questions from Ms. Wright? Thank you very much, ma'am. All right, Robert Civil Engineering, step forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering. Thank you, Ms. Wright, for going through that presentation. Just to reiterate, obviously from the last meeting, what we had discussed, y'all made some recommendations about limiting to you, the use from the GR to just only single-family, along with increasing the lot size from six-thousand, eight-thousand, which we've done that on the current concept plan or sketch plan that you've seen. Also, Mr. Boatwright, Mr. Boatwright, you made a recommendation to consult with the current county commissioner after that meeting, which we've done, consulted with him, reviewed, you know, the adjacent PD texts, current densities in the area, and based off the concept plan or the sketch plan, and that conversation, we've landed on three units per acre, which is totally six-hundred-and-thirty-three units, down a hundred-and-fifteen, which, from the previous sketch plan. And just some figures on that sketch plan, again, the sketch plan is just part of the application, this process, it's subject to change once we get through that nailed down and go through the final plating, or preliminary plating, I'm sorry, breaking down, you know, any phase that may have whenever the end user comes. But currently on that plan right now, a hundred-and-sixteen acres, plus or minus, is the actual lots. We've got twenty-nine acres of right-of-way and sixty-five acres of just other area, which is ponds, amenities, just for that physical representation on that sketch plan, just to kind of break down what that looks like. But again, you know, we've, we've heard the request, our client's willing to make the concessions that y'all have stated from the last meeting with the lot size increase on the minimum, and also consulting with the county commissioner as well with that density request. I'm happy to answer, you know, the questions that you may have.
Okay, go ahead here. I understand going to GR, but going to GR instead of doing a PD text, then if you wanted to change your design, you wouldn't have to come back through for a rezone, correct? Or an amendment to it?
Yeah, with the thought process there, GR, you know, did allow several uses specifically for the residential that our client was looking for. You know, the demand right now that he sees is obviously single-family, and he's willing to make that concessions to limit the current request to single-family only. The reason for the PD, not for the PD text is because right now we don't have the end user. We don't know what that final product looks like. As part of the PD text, you have to submit a master development plan. That master development plan needs to be specific to the design of the property, because otherwise we would have to come back and amend that master development plan, should it be, should it be subject to change once the development moves forward. So since we don't have that, that was the route that we decided to go with the GR zoning classification.
All right. As, as far as the units per acre and the minimum lot size, my recommend, or thought pattern on that is we just limit the units per acre, and if you wanted to do six-thousand-square-foot lots, you could. That would just mean more green space out there, because you are limiting yourself to the number of lots.
That, that's correct. And, you know, from the last meeting to now, I mean, I think our client would be willing to, to, to limit it to just the lot size, I'm sorry, just the density itself, which would cap, obviously, the number of units to six-thirty-three and three units per acre. If that would be something the commission would agree to, and even the BOC, that'd be something our client would agree to as well.
Okay. Thank you.
One of the, this, just general, general question, one of the things that's been brought forward, you know, several of us, I'm sure we've all been hearing, is traffic concerns. It's a two-lane road. We've got lots of two-lane roads in Glen County. Do we have any idea what the current count is on that road?
I do not have.
From what I understand, and I could be wrong, but from what I understand, it's less than a thousand a day?
It's around five-hundred a day.
And then you look at...
Has a traffic study been done? There's, it's, I would have thought it would have been two or three thousand.
Yeah.
It's actually five-hundred and some change.
And I just saw that. I don't know if everybody knows that, but if you compare that to some of the other two-lane roads, Chapel Crossing comes to mind, and there's several high-volume traffic areas, two-lane roads in the community that...
Have tremendously more traffic.
I was surprised when I saw the traffic study, just recently, so.
Yeah, and great point. One thing with that, with where we're at currently, obviously, if we get through this tonight, and the recommendation to the board, and that goes through, typically the next step would be an end user would come at that point, and they would potentially either, you know, develop entire property, I'm sorry, plan for the development of the entire property, or part portion, buy a portion of the property. At that point, we would go through the preliminary plat stage, which would outline kind of how we configure the roads, the lots, and typically at that point, we would then get a traffic study done, because at that point, we know how many lots are coming at that phase, and then the traffic study would then indicate what improvements were needed, whether that be down Buck Swamp, or TC, or Myers Hill, depending on, because this is one of the few areas where you do have multiple access points to get to eighty-two or seventeen. So that would be favorable from the, the traffic pattern itself, but I can't speak to the traffic study yet, because that would be forthcoming in the requirement at the next step, which would be a preliminary plat, once we kind of have a definitive plan of what the phase is and the lot count is at that point.
Thank you.
Mr. Franks? I hope nobody laughs at me about this question. I think it's a dumb question, but I just can't wrap my mind around this. You, you say that when total, we gonna have three dwelling units per acre. All right, tell me the difference between three dwelling units per acre and the three-point-eight dwelling units per acre gross and net. I understand what that means in money, but I don't understand what that means in houses.
So the, the gross is obviously three units times the total property area to get the six-thirty-three. The net factors out the right-of-way and any other waters of the state or wetlands that may be on the property. So you take all those out, which can't be classified as development area, you end up with two-hundred-and-eleven, less the right-of-way, plus those other areas, and then you apply, that density unit per acre comes out to three-point-eight. So it increases because you're deducting the actual development area by reducing the right-of-way, or taking the right-of-way out and other waters of the state or wetlands that may exist. So that's basically the difference. And at this point, with the three units per acre, because we don't have, I guess, the final road layout dimensions, that's kind of where we landed, obviously, too, with the adjacent PDB and units per acre, not net acre, and where we landed on the three units per acre, basically. But the, the difference of the two is you factor out the right-of-way and any state waters that may exist or wetlands on the property, reduce that from the total acreage, and then that's what you're left with, is development area that then applies to the number of lots.
All right. So I'm just making sure I got this correct. Now, I think, I, I, I think that I'm on top of this. So when you went to the powers-to-be for Glen County and asked them what they expected, they told you they wanted three acre, three houses per acre and no more density than that?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
All right. So you've dropped it from seven-hundred-and-forty-eight houses down to six-hundred-and-thirty-three, so that's a loss of a hundred-and-fifteen residences.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and where we kind of consulted with the commissioner and also the county on that is, you know, the adjacent PD texts across the street, which is several thousand acres, they have multiple different areas that have density classifications that vary, all the way down to, I think, three, five, and, and even higher than that. So that, that's consulting with him. That's kind of where we, he came up with that figure and felt that that was a reasonable density per acre.
Okay. Any additional questions from Mr. Franks?
I do have one question. So just to clarify, six-hundred-and-thirty-three units, dwelling units, you're okay that that's the maximum, no matter how, how much?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, I just want to say this out loud. I mean, if it's limited to dwelling units, just knowing that there are different consumers for different kind of projects, or types of housing, I'm not real sure why it has to be single-family. I mean, why can't they be single-family attached, or townhomes, as long as it's limited? Because you'd have more green space that way, if, if possibly, if it was just six-hundred-and-thirty-three units, if that's what we're thinking about passing.
I, I, I do understand that.
Yeah.
I, I, I understand where you're going with that. But I've been instructed that we only want single-family residential homes on Buck Swamp and Myers Hill Road. In the past, we've turned down townhomes. We've turned, we've, we, we've turned down several high, high, high-density.
Right. And I get it, it's about the density, but if we're limiting the density, I'm just thinking, you know, you're going to end up with a more diverse population, possibly. You may end up with more senior citizens. You may end up with not as many school-age kids. I mean, things that would, would give you a greater diversity in your population. And you might also, you know, I'm just saying personally, I, I don't know why you need single-family if you're limiting the, the density, but that's my personal...
Commissioner, no, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah.
But it...
Unless they're just looking...
It, it is what it is, and, and I, I think you should be able to do what you want to do with your property. I've said that many times. But this is where we're at. And this is the guidance that Mr. Franks has been given.
Okay.
So I don't think that's an option at this point. Do, do you?
Well, I, I don't know. Are we working off one county commissioner's recommendation, or the...
No, ma'am.
Okay. Just my thought.
No, I agree. It would allow for actually more green space if reported.
Goes the direction you said earlier.
Yeah.
That, that was my comments. Don't limit it to eight thousand. Get six thousand square foot.
The units, yeah. The dwelling units. That's what the traffic is, yeah.
Yeah, and, and from our perspective, our client would like the diversification of the unit type. He's fine with capping the units. So I, I'm, I'm open for suggestions there, as far as limiting it to the unit count. So I, I'm, I'm open for suggestions there as far as limiting it to the unit count itself and then allowing single-family, townhomes, whatever this commission suggests. That just opens up our, our client's opportunity and his potential end user for the product type.
Okay. All right, commissioners, do we have any additional questions for Mr. Franks? All right, Mr. Franks, you, you did a great job. Thank you very much. All right, on ZM-25-28, we held the public hearing last month at the Mainland Planning Commission in November meeting. So we're not going to have a public hearing tonight. We're, we're going to go straight to the votes and...
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question?
No, 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 ma'am. I mean, no, ma'am.
I'm the public. You represent us, you serve us. Why can't I ask a little question? I want to know why this was put up last night?
Ma'am.
We're supposed to now understand it, please. I understand now.
Lots of questions.
We're here, we have questions.
Changes changed yesterday.
Last night.
Because they're in the back of us.
This isn't...
This is even in line with the conference plan, 2013, we had five conflicts against your home guidance on zoning.
All right. We had the public hearing, we, we heard all the opposition.
You didn't hear the opposition on the change.
On the change, we, we heard three numbers going around, 611, 633, 748. You said, you said cut it in half. They haven't come close to that, to 3,000. That's not even in the meeting minutes. We're looking at 2,110 homes we need placed there. We don't have an end user. Is the attorney saying you can do this? He's listening.
Mr. Attorney? Aaron, are you with us?
Yes, it's, it's acceptable.
It's what?
Acceptable, yes.
Even with these changes?
Yes.
I, I'd just like to say something, but we're only a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, and you will have another opportunity to speak to the people that will make the decision on this rezoning, and that'll be at the Board of Commissioners' meeting.
I'll talk to Sandy Tastasen. We're supposed to be a representative. He said he was helping favor of two houses, two. Mr. Chairman, you said the other thing happened in the last meeting, they're not even close to that.
You should've opened with that, like wasted people's time.
Watch the video.
All right, let's move on. We're, we're, we've already had our public hearing last month. We understand there's tremendous opposition. Again, but, but listen, listen, ma'am, the, the comment, the, the, the comments are over with, okay?
No, it's really not, though. It's changing your stance between this meeting and the Mainland, and I'm the planning commissioner. You, you ran into about how everybody needs to be here and have a voice, and yet tonight you say something completely different. It seems like you have like, you're confused.
No, I'm not confused at all. It's rules that we have to go by for these meetings. Okay? Whatever, ma'am.
So between now and the last meeting, they changed stuff around that we can't make that comments or ask questions? That's allowable? How's that possible?
All right, Mr. Attorney.
You deferred it.
We need your help.
You can make additions on it tonight, and there'll be another public hearing before the Board of Commissioners when it comes back before them.
That's correct.
Is the back here again?
All right, we're going, we're going straight to a vote, folks. So, any discussion among our commissioners?
Can I, can I ask a question of staff?
Absolutely.
Just for clarity, was a public hearing advertised for this meeting?
It was in the graphic news.
So, on the agenda for this evening, this item is under general business because the public hearing was opened, public hearing was held and closed at that last meeting. So there was no advertisement for tonight's agenda that there would be a public hearing.
Okay. Just wanted to make clear.
What you deferred?
All right, commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, just a little bit of discussion before motion on this and taking into account what I said earlier and, Missy, as far as cap goes, I feel like limiting the size or maybe the type of homes. I understand single-family out there, but if there was a duplex or townhomes, that would allow for additional green space out there. It's not going to increase traffic any different on that, out there. So, that being said, I will make a motion to approve ZM-25-28 Southwest Glen Residential Rezone as submitted with a limit of three units per acre gross.
All right, I've got a motion, I need a second.
How many would that be? Three, three?
Ju- just a moment. All right, I have a motion, I need a second.
I'll second it.
All right, I got a motion, a second. All in favor? Six, zero.
633 units.
633 units.
2,110 units.
All right, we're moving right along, folks, to ZM-25-31 Bell Farm Development Rezone, consideration of a change of zone requests from forest agricultural and highway commercial to general residential. The proposed use and single-family home development at 135 Bell Cut Off Road, parcel 02-00761, 3340 Highway 17 South, parcel 02-00685, 3368 Highway 17 South, parcel 02-00684, 175 Miranda Lane, parcel 02-02238, and 194 Miranda Lane, parcel 02-01390, Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Patel and Modi Incorporated, and Sandy K. Spell Owners.
Thank you. Stephanie of Planning and zoning director, this is ZM 2531. This property is located at Exit 29 area. It is off of Highway 17, near where the Windexe Shopping Plaza is. This map right here shows the property. It is primarily forest agricultural, but a couple parcels are highway commercial. Just kind of oriented to the area, this is Highway 17 right here. And there is an existing multifamily development that is, I think it's either nearing completion or it is completed, called Clement Bell Farm. That's apartments right here, and then this is, and the purple is the Windexe, and this is the intersection of 82 and 17. So as I mentioned, this is primarily highway commercial and forest agriculture and cultural, and they are requesting to rezone to general residential for residential development in this area. The GR zoning does allow 10 units per acre, and there's a mix of residential types that are allowed, so single-family, townhomes, multifamily, duplexes could all be allowed in GR. Their proposal is for 169 lots, which is what they've shown on their sketch plan. However, based on just pure GR zoning, it could be a maximum of 470 lots on this property. Again, as, as was talked about in the last application, not accounting for right-of-way, other, you know, other conditions that might be on the site, but this would be a max of 470, just looking at the, the 10 units per acre on this property, because it's about 47 acres. And so just so you're aware, because this is a conventional zone, not a planned development district, the sketch plan that's included is, is conceptual. So unless there was a condition limiting the number of units, if it is just rezoned to GR, you know, they could go up to potentially as 470. But as I mentioned, their sketch plan is showing 169 at this time. The current, as I said, majority is, is forest agricultural, and FA does allow two units per acre, so the difference is going from two units per acre to potential 10 units per acre. And then just an aerial view, these are the, the properties here outlined in blue. And then this is a Southwest Glen character area in the comprehensive plan, which does really allow a different, multitude of different uses, and the GR zone is considered a compatible zoning district in Southwest Glen character area. So this is their sketch plan that they've submitted with their proposal. So just to orient you again, this is Highway 17 down here. There is a new road that does go to the Clement Bell Farm multifamily, and this would be their primary access to this new development. So this does, this is at the intersection of Highway 17 and Southport Parkway, which is across the way, I'm sorry, Martin, I think it's Martin Palmer, not Southport Parkway there. So there's the intersection here, and then they have units coming off to this side with the cul-de-sac. This is behind the fire station, if you're familiar with that area as well. And then they are showing an emergency access only, not a primary access that would come down here. So this is further south on Highway 17. This is surrounding area, just, there's a road back here that does have some FA, I'll kind of show you back on this map. So, yeah, property, this area is off, is mostly FA, larger lot tracks. This subdivision here is an existing FA's and subdivision, so those lots are, you know, 20,000 square feet to an acre or so. The lots up here are a little larger than that. And these are your possible motions, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And Zach Harris from Hunter McLean and Wesley Franks from Robert Civil Engineering are here for this application this evening.
All right, we got any questions from Ms. Lee?
Yes. What are the buffer requirements with, are there any for the GR if it joins up to, like I said, Deerwood next to it? That's what, FA, I think, or something like that?
Yes. Yeah, under the current code, the buffer requirements, that would be along Deerwood and then the road to the north, because those are residential and the FA zone, there is a Type A buffer requirement. So that'd be 12 feet of landscaping with a six-foot privacy fence or a 20-foot depth of landscaping would be the buffer required on those sides.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Franks?
Good evening again, Commissioners. Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering. As Ms. Lee pointed out, we've got Mr. Harris here with Hunter McLean, who's also representing the project as well, and we do have Mr. and Ms. Reel, they are the developers here as well in attendance. I'm going to speak to kind of the current sketch plan that we've got developed, and I'll let Mr. Harris come up there and kind of elaborate on the, the zoning and, and kind of provide his recommendations and his coordination, what he's gone through at this point as well. To speak to the question that you just brought up, Mr. Neville, with regard to the buffer, the yellow hatched area is the Type A modified buffer that we've got shown on there. A couple of things to point out as well that we've been made aware of through our coordination with Commissioners and also the county as well, is limiting the access. Our access that we currently have shown is on Bell Farm Road. We have secondary access off 17. We do understand that access to Dusty Lane and Bell Cut Off Road is not warranted or warrant, wanted, I should say, and we have restricted, so we don't have access to those two roads and limiting it only to the existing Bell Farm Road along with the secondary access on 17. So I just wanted to point that out as well. Again, this is a sketch plan. We do show single-family. Currently, right now, with the developers, again, they have some interest in the property. That use could vary based off the, the current allowances in the GR, which is what we're asking for, to allow that flexibility in the ultimate end-use there. But as part of the application, we're required to show the sketch plan, and currently we show the single-family, just like you've seen here on the plan, and that 6,000 square foot lots you see are 169 units with the access points like I've described. But happy to answer any questions on the sketch plan itself, and I can, they can elaborate, bring Mr. Harris up, and he can answer any questions on the, the zoning if you'd like. One thing real quick that I do want to point out, as part of the multifamily project that's to the north, we did have roadway improvements on Highway 17 that went through GDOT, those are currently in place right now. Again, like I spoke before, once we get to the next step beyond this development, we will have to go through the development process, whether that be a site plan or a plat. At that point, typically, we would do an evaluation again of the traffic with the study that would need to be done based off the unit count that we're proposing and the use. That would go through the county, also the DOT, and at that point, an evaluation of what those improvements would need to be would be recommended in that study, and then we would implement that with construction plans beyond that point. So I wanted to point that out as well, so. Mr. Harris?
I guess, any questions for me?
Not yet. Step forward, sir.
All right. Thank you, Bishop, Commissioner Boatwright, Planning Commissioners. My name is Zach Harris, I'm attorney with Hunter McLean. I represent the developer in this project, who's under contract for these lots with the, under contract with the owners of the property to purchase this, and we're here for rezoning application, as you heard from Mr. Franks. Mr. Lemmings could not be here tonight, and since his regrets, he had unavoidable conflict, and so we are sliding in for him as the agent, but we want to ask for your favorable consideration for this rezoning tonight. Have with me Susan and John Reel, the developers here. They are experienced developers here in Glen County. They have at least one or two other projects in the general area out there. And we are asking for GR here because we feel it's an appropriate and reasonable district for the land you see. As Mr. Franks said, you have immediately next door a medium residential multifamily development. You have a shopping center, busy shopping center there, right adjacent to this project. You have across the road, a growing commercial park with multiple retail service uses and other light and medium commercial uses there, right down from a, a growing intersection, right down from an interstate exit, further down from a, a growing port. This whole area, as illustrated on the, the comprehensive plan, is a, is a destination area. It is growing. It is growing commercially, it's growing residentially, and so what we are proposing is a GR general residential district in what we believe is obvious, is a transitional area. And so what you have here is a sketch plan that shows 169 single-family homes. Y'all are very familiar with GR, you know that it has multiple permitted uses there so far as residential housing product goes, but in Glen County, at least right now, the market shows a high demand and a high shortage of single-family homes. So that's what we think is going to work in this area, that's what we're proposing. But it's, you know, everybody from the Chamber of Commerce to employers, to the port, to, to trade, trade publications, industry publications will echo, you've got a shortage of housing. And especially in this I-95 corridor, this coastal corridor, if people want to be here, people want to be able to afford houses here, and so the only way you can meet that, at least practically, is to supply the houses. So we are proposing that this be zoned to GR to, to help meet some of that demand. So, again, we're, we're happy to answer questions you have. As Mr. Franks said, we've had lots of conversations about this, we've paid attention to other developments in the area in the past. We know that Dusty Lane to the, to the top of the, the concept plan shown would be, likely be disruptive to have a main exit off of there, so we're not, you know, we're, my clients are comfortable with the access and the ingress egress shown on this concept plan. We're, we're certainly sensitive to the area and, and want it to be a value add and a complement to the, to a growing and transitional area and not a disruption. So, with that, we'd ask for your favorable consideration, be glad to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, commissioners, do we have any questions?
The, under the... The, under the GR sits ten units per acre, or how much, how many units was that net? On that, whoever, doesn't matter.
Are you talking about the current sketch plan?
No, no, I understand we got one hundred sixty-nine residential units. But in GR, if we did a multifamily, whatever, ten units per acre, based on the net acreage, how many units would that be roughly?
I wouldn't even have an idea because that's based off, again, we factor out the right-of-way.
Right.
I don't think there's really, other than the pond that you see, that's, and that's not even state watered, but really it's just a right-of-way. We don't have the number yet because if it's...
Gross then, on that, would be, how many acres was it?
Gross is forty-five point, forty-seven point two-five, so forty, four hundred and seventy plus or minus units.
Right, which is unrealistic with rights of ways and everything else.
That's correct, yeah, when you factor in, I mean, you're probably looking at thirty percent of the property being right-of-way and detention area.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any questions for Mr. Franks? Thank you. All right, it's time to open the public hearing portion of ZM-25-31, Bell Farm Development Rezone. Anyone like to step forward in opposition? Step forward, please, ma'am. Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Andrea Coleman, and I actually live right in the back, this is the backyard. The twenty-foot buffer zone would be in my backyard.
It's in your backyard?
Yes.
That's close, isn't it?
Pretty darn close.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. So I wrote this out, just, you know, just thought that'd be a little bit easier. We live directly behind the proposed subdivision by Patel, under the rezoning of agricultural to residential. We strongly oppose this rezoning and building for a few reasons. Number one, this area is built in a swampland. Routinely during the wet months, our backyard floods and we have a pond for approximately three months. So just going off script, I'm not really sure how they're going to deal with that, especially with the proposed lakes and buffering. I just really hate to see people buy expensive homes and then, then, you know, be living in a flood, floodland. This leads me to point number two, the amount of wildlife in the last year I've witnessed is incredible and very dependent on the ecosystem already at work in this area. It's forest and agricultural for a reason, and I think we should keep it that way. Herons, hawks, doves, raccoons, squirrels, geckos, lizards, tons of frogs, all kinds of birds and a variety of P, bees, pollinators and insects that are drawn to our garden. Number three, infrastructure, which is something that I've heard y'all address, and yes, we're going to look at the traffic later. Well, it's already, I don't know the traffic study specifically, but I do know the roads surrounding this neighborhood cannot support more people in traffic without a huge investment of money into widening roads, signal lights, et cetera. As it is now, there are two schools nearby and a huge apartment complex, as they mentioned, that was just built, but we have yet to see the impact of that traffic yet. I see parents with babies in strollers, kids riding bikes, people walking to the Winn-Dixie on the main road, on the side of the road, because there are no sidewalks. All it's going to take is one person getting hit and then the lawsuit, what's going to happen? Okay, let's think about that. I urge the city to reconsider the zoning, as it will prove dangerous and expensive to build more infrastructure for citizens. Those that bought the house here, my friend, who fifteen years ago, did so to enjoy the natural environment and knowing they were buying near agricultural zone marshland. Light pollution, traffic and more accidents, along with the disruption of the ecosystems, are surely in store if this development moves forward. So I would urge y'all to think about that, there is a huge impact. I know that this area is growing, but there is, there are other places, not in a swampland. It is going to cause a lot of irrefutable damage that cannot be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person in opposition? Please state your name and your address, please, ma'am.
My name is Anna Millison, I live, my husband and I live at 141 Cedar Dale Road. We got the letter that this complex is going up two hundred yards from our front door, basically. It's no mystery, when you buy property, you know the zoning. It's not like you, just all of a sudden, it becomes something else. We purchased out there because of the zoning. And I understand that we need growth, that's fine. However, everybody's chasing the almighty dollar, and that's exactly what's going on in our neighborhoods. If we wanted to live in a subdivision, we would have purchased in a subdivision. Right now, our ditches, if it rains, stays full for two to three weeks. The apartment building that was built has their water pouring into our ditches also. Nowhere for it to go. We all know what happens in the south with ditches filling with water, mosquitoes galore. I'm just really upset that the people who live in these areas are not being heard. It seems that the builders are the only ones being heard. It really disappoints me that that's taking place. And if, like I said, they want to live in subdivision, that's fine. All of us purchased out there because we didn't want to live in a subdivision. And now that's surrounding us. The monstrosity of the apartment building that was built at the end of my road, no buffer at all. They put up a giant fence, they're exactly in the backyard of our friend and neighbor who plants a garden, no longer. It's gotten just out of hand, we cannot, and there's no way to stop it. There's no way for us to stop it because nobody cares. They're only listening to the builders, developers, and that's it. We have been pushed to the side, and I'm just really disappointed that this is happening. We feed the deer in our yard, I would like to continue that. We feed everything in our yard, I would like to continue that. But what's happening out there, half of my neighbors deny me to show up because you know what they told us? There's no need, there's no need for them, for us even to go. Which is really sad to me. Why, why should anybody feel that way in their own neighborhood? They shouldn't. So I would like you to consider the fact that some of us are there for a reason. We bought there for a reason, because we don't want to live in a neighborhood, you know? And that's just my, our opinion on it, my husband and mine, and obviously my neighbors. My neighbors showed, we all showed up to try to avoid that apartment building, but no voice was heard, but the builders. And now this is coming in two hundred yards from me, this big neighborhood. And as far as the ditches go, all I see is more water everywhere. So that's all I have to say about it, and I don't have any fancy words for you guys or any, you know, anything else. I just live out there and I would like to keep it pretty much the way it is. Otherwise, I would have purchased in a neighborhood, a subdivision.
Yes, ma'am. We hear you and we definitely respect what you say. But we have to take in consideration the other people that own this property, the property that is next to you. This board has to take in consideration, by law, those people have the right, if they're meeting our ordinances and guidelines, they have the right to develop their property. Okay? And
Yeah.
there's not anything we can do about that. We cannot tell, this county cannot tell anybody, they cannot develop their property.
But you can stop it from being rezoned.
Zoning, zoning, and is, it is a portion of the county rules and regulations that can be changed. Any person has the right to come before this board and ask for a rezoning, as long as it meets the guidelines and the criteria that this county sets forward. And listen, I, I was born and raised in the area you're talking about. I understand what folks are going through. I'm, I'm going through the same thing at my farm. My wife and I own Myers Plantation. The county just bought eighteen hundred acres around me. I, I mean, our place is one of the most historic places in all of Glen County. We have records that go back to seventeen hundred for the property that my wife and I own. Newspaper articles that mentions Myers Plantation from the early seventeen hundreds. So it's been here a long time, it's very historical. The port is growing, and they're going to basically build a train station all around my property. I don't like it, ma'am, I don't, but there's not anything we can do about it. They're abiding by the law, they have the right to develop their property. And the only thing that I can say, some way, shape or form, I knew, we've lived where we live a long, well, a very long time. I've known that at some point that property was going to be developed, and it's on top of me now. And I'm not just talking about building an apartment complex, I'm talking about heavy industrial is coming next to Myers Plantation. I should have some way, shape or form figured out how to buy that and buffer my property, but I was like everybody else. I didn't have the money to do it, you know, I was raising children, I was doing what have you. And, and it's just, it's unfortunate. But we, we can sit here, this community can sit here and hate growth and talk about how bad growth is as long as you want to. There are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people that want to move here, just like you and your husband did.
I understand that. We, we have lived here a very long time, and them wanting to move here is not really my problem. What my problem is, is that we are living basically a subdivision coming in right on top of us. The apartments have come in right on top of us. And like I told you before, our ditches stay filled. We've called the county out there, I don't know how many times, to just clean them out, just so water is not sitting. Where is it supposed to go? Now there's more coming. Like I said, the apartments have put their drainage on Dusty Lane, which is right at the end of my road. All of that, these, I mean, I feel like I'm wasting my time. I appreciate you listening to me, but I figured that this is probably it, it's not going to go any further, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, anyone else like to step forward in opposition?
Good evening, my name is Wade Williams, I live at 129 Emmanuel Loop. Not too far from you, Mr. Boatright. I deal with the trains a lot. But you, you seem to categorize everybody as hate-growth. You, you just did that. You, anybody who's in opposition for any reason, whether it's a logical reason, whether it's a right reason, whether it makes sense or not, you just categorize them in one category. Now, this is a way of arguing where you demoralize your opposition so that you can shut them down. To demoralize the people in your community, in your backyard, is not very smart. We do oppose this, but it's for very logical reasons. One, we did move because of the green spaces, which are disappearing. There is no end to the site in which y'all are at. Living where we live, we have two exits, one's 303, which is always packed, it's a two-lane road. And if you're going into Brunswick, you will have to stop and wait a long time. Now with the ports, the ports haven't grown yet. We're still waiting on that to impact our exit. There is no consideration for how all of that is going to work together and impact each other. You've already made improvements for that. Now, there's a plan going on right now to change all the rules again. What's the point of that if we come in here and then the rules are changed? If they're laid out for what the public is going to expect, there are voices, they supposedly have a voice in that, that voice doesn't matter because it's changed here. Even if you show up and oppose it, it's changed here. You're, this is not about them doing what's allowed on that property based on the zoning. This is a re-change of the zoning to allow something other than has already been planned way in the future. And the point of planning way in the future is so that you can grow systematically correctly without, as you said, you did not want disruptions. This creates major disruptions for those living there. We already have the disruptions. We have numbers of truckers who sleep on the edge of the interstate. Nobody's cleaning that up. We have truckers that sleep all down our road, nobody's cleaning it up, nobody's worried about all that. All these disruptions, and we've got women now who are walking in seventeen with baby strollers. Yes, these are disrupting because the proper planning has not been done. This is a planning committee. You, you set the rules, you need to abide by your rules, you need to follow your rules. And if, and if we want to plan for future growth, then there's a meeting coming up where we can plan for that properly by building proper bridges, expanding those bridges, expanding those roads and putting in the proper infrastructure for ditches and canals to deal with the amounts of water that we get during the summertime. I happen to have a large pond on my property, which receives a lot of that water. I understand how, we all understand how the water operates in that area. And, and you don't just come up with too small, we don't have land here, we have swamps. And you have to divert that water, and you know that. And we have set forth a plan. Why can't we follow that plan? And if it needs to change, then let's change the plan, let's adapt the plan. There's a meeting coming up just this week, next week, or this week. There's four of them coming up. But no, no, it's not proposed then, it's when the people aren't listening that you try to push this through. And you've done this several times. We need the proper infrastructure if we're going to grow.
All right, all I'll say to that is governments are not reactionary. Well, actually, they're not going to do anything until they're absolutely made to do it. So... Listen, folks, if y'all know all the answers to this, why, why don't you run for county commissioner next, next election? Yeah, I, I mean, that's, if that's the direction y'all want to go in, that's fine. That engineer will tell us exactly how it's going, how it's going to be, how it's going to be done. That engineer, Mr. Wesley Franks, will tell us exactly how it's going to be done. All right, Mr. Franks, tell us how the water's going to be.
Mr. Chairman, did you want to finish the public comment period first before asking questions? Or do you want to ask questions?
That's probably, anyone else like to step forward in opposition?
I'm JR Millison, her husband, I live at 141 Cedar Dale Road. Two thousand and six, we bought fourteen acres just to the north of that, right there, the other side of Dusty Lane there. And we cut us out three acres for a yard. Mr. Patel wanted to buy the property behind me because he wanted to put in the Indian community. And I told him, no, I didn't want a community right behind me. He bought this other property that them apartments are on now and all this other, come in, cut all the big pines off, destroyed, you know how it is when they come in and cut big trees, they destroy the rest of them. Now, he sold and they put them apartments in there in opposition, once again, to all the neighbors out there because, like this gentleman here, we bought out there because we wanted to be away from town. If we wanted to live in town, we'd live in town. The apartments were supposed to be two-story. County Commissioners had them a little dead-of-the-night meeting, next thing you know, they're three-story. They never even asked us about that. Now they got that, as he said, the ditch draining into our ditches, that stay full. Whoever gave that traffic report that said there's five hundred out there, they should have opened their eyes and counted. You were more correct when you said about three or four thousand. You can't get on seventeen coming out that way. They can't control the traffic because they fly from the lake subdivision, up Bum Gardner, down Cedar Dale, down Dusty Lane and Bell Cut Off to go over to get their kids to school, running fifty-five and sixty in a twenty-five mile an hour zone. As the other lady said, people are walking up and down them roads for exercise, bicycles. It's the country, it's the country. And now, how many homes, I misunderstood, or maybe I didn't hear, how many homes are they planning on putting there?
I didn't say.
How many? One sixty-nine homes? A hundred and sixty-nine homes out there, so they can pad their pockets with a bunch of money and then go on to the next subdivision somewhere else, leaving us stuck with the traffic, having to live around all that. I don't know why the Planning and Zoning Commission and the County Commissioners are trying so desperately to turn Brunswick into Jacksonville, Florida, or Savannah, Georgia. Because when you do that, that same crime that they have will be here. We live in the country for a reason, we'd like to stay there for a reason, and we expect and depend on y'all and the County Commissioners to protect us. And so far, that's not happening.
All right, next person in opposition? All right, next person in opposition. All right, hearing none, seeing none, do we have anybody that would like to step forward in favor of ZM-25-31? All right, Mr. Franks, step forward. I think you got some questions to, to, to answer.
Yeah, I guess, first and foremost, just kind of on a personal note, born and raised here, lived on the north part of the county my whole life, went to college, came back. Remember playing baseball, I don't know if anybody remembers, on the little baseball field at the end of where now Harry Jiggers is, right down when you go to standby aviation. That whole area's been developed. You know, at some point, it was the country, at some point, it was larger lots. It's now afforded me the opportunity to live out there. You know, it got developed, that PD text, I think, was 99 or 98. I understand where people are coming from, but there's also growth opportunities. And if that wasn't developed, then I wouldn't be living where I'm at right now, with my family across from the schools that are now built there to support the neighborhoods that are there. So, just, just my two cents from being born and raised here and seeing what was once, I guess, quote-unquote, "the country" or "undeveloped" to now being developed over the last 15, 20 years, that's now afforded me the opportunity to live in a, a community that I love. But outside of that, I'll kind of get to kind of the points that were brought up for questions. You know, we are aware of the conditions out there with regard to the water. That's something we will take into consideration when we move into the civil design phase. From a construction aspect, you know, we take into account any off-site drainage, onsite drainage, the conditions of the groundwater, and factor all that into our design so that we can meet the requirements of the stormwater ordinance, which is part of our job to do when we submit construction plans and the drains report to the county. As they spoke before, Dusty Lane does accept the water naturally from the current development and from that apartment complex. There is a drainage easement down Dusty Lane at the end of it, it actually goes to the south, it's got an easement on it. From there, it goes all the way to the Tidley Influence Creek, so the county does have the ability to go out there and maintain that, which is one of the things that we look for when we do developments. Where are we taking the water? Where is it going now? Is there a pathway for it to be maintained? Do easements need to be installed to make sure that it is flowing like it should? Once we do our design and it gets into the public right away from there, it's the, the county to make sure, one, that our plans met the requirements of the pre and post we're going off, that we make sure that we're not flooding downstream, upstream. All that gets taken into consideration, and then we meet the requirements where we detain the water to meet the post as if it were undeveloped, and then release that to a point that we've investigated that is the natural conveyance pathway to the next system. So hopefully that answers that question with regard to how we factor that in when we get to that phase of construction or design, I guess, should I say?
Where's the walking path to your ears?
Sir, Madam Officer, Madam Officer, ma'am, Glen County Police Officer, if one more person in the public disrupts this meeting, please escort them from this building.
And with regard to that question, one thing that happens with development, specifically with Harry Jiggers, there is a lot of development there, more so than you probably see here. But what that affords on the opportunity with developers in the county, you then get opportunities to improve infrastructure. When you have developers come in, they are then required to upgrade that infrastructure or provide the infrastructure necessary to support the water, the sewer, the storm, the roads. So, as the natural progression of development comes with developers, you do have that county investment because they see the increase in demand. You also have the investment on the developer's side that then can support, you know, the onsite requirements, but also the offsite should it need to support that. And then, once the county, I guess, sees the need for sidewalks, you know, if that warrants that, that's something that, you know, like you were mentioning before, if there's a need there, you could talk to your public official. I can't speak to the people walking down the side of the road utilizing dollars to put that in, which I'm assuming that was what happened with Harry Jiggers. They acquired a lot of right-of-way, they did put a sidewalk in, they've done roundabouts. That's what you get when you have development. And this particular area, unfortunately, is not the country anymore. You can see where we're at, we're right there adjacent to the intersection of 82 and 17 and 95. So you're going to have this natural progression of growth, and this right here being the forefront of it. Let's see. Yeah, I believe that answered all the questions that I can answer at this point. Happy to answer anything that you think I may have missed.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Franks?
Sort of the same question, same question on the other development. Are you, as part of this, willing to limit the number of dwellings?
I think our clients here, at this point, our request is for the GR. We don't have, I guess, technically, the end use, whether that's single-family town home. Right now, we have a sketch plan that shows single-family, but our current request is, you know, what the GR classification is for the density, that 10 units per net acre.
All right.
Chair.
Take a step forward, please.
Thank you. Zach Harris, Hunter McLean, again. So, as it's, as it sits right now, for the reasons both Mr. Franks and I have talked about already, you've got a transitional area, right? You've got all that commercial development all around it. And, and what you have here is a, is a proposed reasonable GR district. So what does that capture? Well, that captures, as staff has pointed out in the staff report, what is proposed, and, and ultimately, what is a maximum based on the gross acreage of the tracts assembled here. So, part of this is because you, part of what is, part of the reason why it's proposed the way it's proposed is because we don't know what's going to happen in the future in this area, other than we know it's going to continue to grow. We know that you're going to continue to have greater commercial pressures, new hotels, new commercial outlets built in and around this area, further out, in, as you point out, in the, in the new, future industrial park out there, so you're going to continue to see growth. And what does that mean? It means you, as a landowner, as a potential developer, want to maintain flexibility. So, as it stands right now, we don't think it's fair, for one thing, to, to be hamstrung by, by what I, you know, I think reasonably, you could argue, is an arbitrary limitation on what can be put out there. And on the other hand, what might not be actually a legal limitation on what can be put on a straight zoning district under the county ordinances. So, right now, you know, I don't want to stand up here and represent that, oh, well, yeah, sure, we'd, we'd agree to whatever you wanted to go with, because I don't think that's accurate, I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's in my client's interest to agree to that. And, and ultimately, I don't know that in this area that it would make sense to limit it, outside of the limitation that's already in the general residential district. And I'd also add, anytime, you know, at, at, before, at any point that anything goes vertical on this track, you're going to have further review by county staff, everybody on the design review team, from all the different departments and offices throughout the county and joint water and sewer. You're going to have DOT analysis on, on ingress and egress there on the state highway 17. You're going to have planning review, plat review, and potentially, depending on, you know, when the plat comes forward, you might actually have, you know, a lot more review depending on what happens with our subdivision and zoning ordinances. So, so I think the answer to that is, no, we don't believe that a condition is fair on this property at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, any additional questions?
Quick question, and, Mr. Franks, you can just nod. You mentioned, basically, net to gross with detention and roads, you're looking at about a 30% decrease in...
Yeah, that's probably an average percentage there with what that looks like, acreage that comes off the development area.
Okay, that, and I'm just thinking, you know, that from 470 units, that drops it down to like 330, maybe 350, possibly at the most, in there, just because of all the infrastructure that'd be required.
I think the variance to that would be if they did multifamily.
Go up. Well, you'd be putting more on smaller areas though, too, on that. I mean, they could still, this is probably a question for staff, the 10 units per acre is net, correct, on that, and not gross? So, they'd have to abide by, deduct the roads and then calculate their densities.
They can go, correct me if I'm wrong, three stories.
35, 35 feet is the GR.
Yeah.
That'd be a hard three stories.
That'd be hard to live three stories in 35 feet.
Yeah, you're not talking real steep roofs or anything, I don't believe, on that.
All right, Commissioners, where we going to go? So, I haven't closed the public hearing, and I did ask if I had anyone that would like to speak in favor, no one stepped forward, so we are going to close the public hearing. All right, Commissioners, talk to me. Just a continuance. All right, no one wants to make a motion?
I'll just say, I think my struggle is, I'm okay with single-family, I'm okay with attached, single-family, and even some townhomes. I think where I struggle is that, that it could be a true, you know, apartment, multifamily of some level, right adjacent to all this FA. I think, I think that's my challenge.
So, so you're saying either single-family, attached, or detached, which you could do townhomes in?
Right.
But no apartments?
Yeah, I think, I think that's personally, you know, my challenge, I'm not sure I walked in the door with that as being my complete, but, you know, yeah. I, you know, and I think, you know, you see in our market that, I mean, and the free market needs to decide, but, and I, and I get that the development cost, I think that's the part that I'm always continuing to be shocked at, is the price per door for a single-family lots is, is a lot, and what it takes to get that done. And, and, you know, if we, that's the piece that's, you know, I, I get that you're trying, that anyone's trying to figure out how to make all those dollars work. But I do think there's a lot of opportunity to, to develop the property if you had those options without having to go general residential. And I think some of the public comments we got on, you know, in writing certainly talked about that a little bit, so. And I do wish the, you know, just to speak to people that live in that area, you know, it's always the chicken or the egg, as you said, you know, do the, does the infrastructure, they're not going to, most counties aren't in a position to build a ton of infrastructure before the development because they need the tax dollars to do the infrastructure, and that vacant land does not pay near as much in tax dollars. And so, trying to figure that out, but, you know, what would be nice in this area and other areas like it, that there was some future, you know, that we, we are, you know, we may not be able to build it today, but we're going to acquire the right-of-ways, or we know kind of the game plan, because I do think this area out there can be very, very challenging, traffic-wise, right, especially in this condensed area. But I would, you know, hope that's on the radar of the county and the DOT and the other folks that have to be part of that. Because as I tell our federal folks, when they don't care about us, about the cost of insurance on our area, you know, you have lots of folks that, you know, that say, well, we don't care your insurance costs so much on the coast. Well, they don't build ports in the middle of the United States of America, right? So, and if we want the things that come in with ports, we got to have ports and, or go out with ports, and we got to have the people that can work at them and have a, you know, work at them at the, and have somewhere to live that, that makes sense for them. But, so it is challenging, and, and I'm a, you know, strong proponent of private property rights of these folks and the folks that already live out there and bought. And it, it is, I feel like, we try really hard to weigh those things and figure out what's right and what's the best solution, and there's a lot of compromises involved in that from a whole lot of people that have been involved in a lot of processes. But I wish that this committee had complete control of all of those things, but we don't, and we have a charge of just recommendations to the county.
We don't have control of anything.
Well, but I just, I want to say that, that, that that's where my, you know, and I've talked to these gentlemen a little bit, and, and I just think that's where my rub is, is just the, the true, being able to do true multifamily.
I, I understand that completely, and the folks, and I'm one of them, that live out in west, southwest Glen County, I don't know how to tell you other than that is not a rural area anymore. All my people are from rural Georgia. I've probably got kin folks, I've probably got cousins that's never walked on a sidewalk before in their life, and when you go to their farms and you go to their, their places in Marshawn and Alma and Baxley, they don't want sidewalks, and they truly live in rural America. They live in rural America. But, but I, I understand, like I say, I was, I was born and raised four miles from Exit 29. I've lived there my whole life. Most folks that have lived there longer than 10 or 15 years, they all know my parents, they know everybody that lives in that area. You know, growth is, is good in one way, and it's terrible in another way, but it's going to happen. Personally, I don't understand why people want to come to Glen County and live, but they do. I was born and raised here, I guess, I just, there's a whole sense, my wife and I have become adults and can go where, there's a whole lot of places I'd rather live than Glen County. If I was moving from somewhere, if I never lived here before, I love Glen County, I've lived my whole life here, there's a lot of places that's a lot nicer than Glen County that have a whole lot less problems than Glen County has. I, I don't know how to stop this, I don't know how to keep these folks from coming and asking for this. They're entitled to do what they want to with their property, as long as, like I said, as long as it meets the guidelines and the rules and regulations. So, with that being said, what are we going to do about Bell Farm Development Rezone?
Mr. Chairman, may I make one final statement?
Absolutely.
On behalf of my clients. So earlier I said, you know, we, we would not want any conditions, and that specifically was about the unit comment, but we, you know, we don't intend to put multifamily out there if multifamily is a concern. So if the commission wanted to recommend a condition that there be no multifamily use, we would, you know, we would be amenable to that because there's no intention to put multifamily out there. I, I, you know, we'd kind of have to talk to, I guess, council about that, county council about that, as to what that looks like on a straight zoning request, but if the recommendation from the planning commission is to, you know, prohibit multifamily in some, I guess, some legal mechanism, we'd be open to that. I would point out, though, sort of, there was an earlier comment, earlier in the evening about the challenges when you look at a, a plan development text, if you have any changes, you have to come back for the whole, the whole planning and development evaluation process to, to even change a, a master plan. So we, you know, I don't think a plan development is an answer here. So, you know, if there's a concern... So, you know, if there's a concern about multifamily, we're, we're open to a condition that multifamily not be allowed out there. But, you know, otherwise, we would, we would ask for your favorable consideration tonight, so that we can, we can move forward to the county commission.
By, a quick question by, you said no multifamily, you're talking about like duplexes and townhomes, or just apartments?
I, well, we're talking about how, how multifamily is defined under the ordinances. So you'd, you'd primarily be talking about, you know, multiple units, multiple dwelling units grouped together, so an apartment is the first one that comes to mind.
Single family residential then, is what you're...
I, I mean, yes, that's the, that's the proposal, that's what the intention is out there, that's what we think the market will support. So, that's, that's where, that's where my clients are in, tonight, and in, in their evaluation of, of the development opportunity here.
All right, how we wanna proceed, Commissioners?
So, Gary, just to go over what you said before, the zoning, you're the guru of memorizing all the zoning things. So, in you mentioned the zone that, where you could have single family townhomes and duplexes. What would be their downside of that zoning versus the general residential? If they don't have an intent to do an apartment-type development?
Well, you can plat, you can plat. So, so in some cases, you know, townhomes are considered multifamily, in some cases they're considered single family attached, based on how you plot and plat the lots out. So if every person owns the dirt under their townhome, you know, that's single family as a, as sort of an academic concept. But, you know, this is not a multifamily development, it's not, not being evaluated from that standpoint, it's not being proposed from that standpoint, so.
So I guess, that's my question, so why general residential then?
Because it provides the flexibility to plan for the future for a changing area. It's a, you know, you're, you're, you're sandwiched in between a, a medium residential apartment complex, a shopping center, and light to medium commercial across the street in a, in a growing intersection out down from a, a growing port and interstate exit. So, you know, I, I completely understand where people who would, who are on FA lots are, are saying that this is, you know, I, they don't want this development, but, you know, that's where this entire area is going, and it's reflected in the comprehensive plan. That, that's planned for by the county, and they, you know, they don't have sidewalks out there right now. You know, they don't have as many sidewalks as I'd like to see where I live, but, but they're coming. You know, the, the county can't kick the can down the road for, but for so long, because obviously the more people that they have out there, the more demand is gonna grow for those services and those infrastructure. So, I, you know, we, we understand, we get it. It's, it's not that, that, you know, the, the sentiment is being disregarded, but, you know, there are, a lot of the things we heard tonight are engineering challenges. So, it's, it's, it's stormwater detention and flow and planning, and, and those are based on mathematical calculations that are well-accepted, not just in Glen County, but all over the place in this state and on the coast. And so, the, these are, you know, from, from traffic to stormwater, you know, the common opposition, you know, the common sort of technical, infrastructure-based opposition comments, not just with this project, but with lots of projects that y'all hear every time you get together, those are engineering and funding issues. Sometimes it's county funding, sometimes it's developer funding, but it's all engineered around, so. I, you know, I'll stop talking to this point, but, you know, you know, we think this is a reasonable project for a changing area. We understand the opposition, but it's a, you know, it's coming, it's growing, and, and what they're proposing is based on the county's existing ordinances. So, you know, we'd ask for you to support this project. It, you know, these, these, these concerns are going to be vetted, they're gonna be fly-spect by everybody from, you know, county GIS to JWSC and, and, and Public Works and everybody else in the DRT process, so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioners?
I think taking the multifamily apartment concern, I mean, that's everybody's concern, or there's others, but that's significant.
So, I guess I would ask Aaron, does he have concerns about, you know, with a straight zoning, not a PD text, trying to put a limitation on it?
Aaron, are you still there?
I'm here, yes.
Did you hear Commissioner New's question?
I did, but can she repeat it?
Yeah, just, the applicant brought up whether, on a general, you know, a zoning request, no PD texts, the, you know, putting some sort of exclusion from that zoning class for, specific to this property.
Right, so, it's okay to place conditions on the rezoning recommendation, but if the applicant does not agree to those, it's best for the MPC to vote on the application as presented.
Saying they, you know, we need to have a conversation if they agree to that, but...
But limitations are okay, conditions are okay, but if the applicant is not agreeable to those conditions, then the best thing the MPC can do is to vote on the application as presented, up or down.
And Commissioners, in this case, the applicant's attorney did agree that if that is a condition about the multifamily, then they're agreeable to that, but if you'd like them to, you know, come back on the record to reiterate that, if that's something you wanna do. And then, we, there were some questions about, you know, what GR allows and what is multifamily, so if there's any more questions on that, I do have the GR zoning just pulled up and the definition of multifamily.
Yes, so, we, if we agreed to the zoning with no multifamily, what does that eliminate?
Okay, so it does eliminate, basically, so the, the multifamily would all be on, on one lot, but if they were to do, you know, townhomes or duplexes, and then have, you know, fee simple lots beneath each of those units, then that would be considered single family, and that would be allowed. So, it would just be, you know, the large tract that would have the multifamily. So just the definition of multifamily is a dwelling designed for or occupy, or occupied by three or more persons or families, living independently of each other. Where an, where an undivided lot contains more than one dwelling, not meeting the subdivision requirements for single family or duplex, duplex lots. The use shall be considered multifamily even though less than three dwelling units are contained within the building.
So that eliminates apartment complex, condominiums?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
So, basically, single family and single family attached?
Yeah, it would be, that's right, and, yeah, just to reiterate, that, that could look, look like townhomes, that could look like duplexes, or, or your traditional single family lot.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think, I think, wanna just clarify, like, the attorney said that, do you agree, knowing that definition, would that change?
I got the impression that it was multifamily, or, excuse me, single family, which included single family attached, basically no apartments, no commercial, I guess, is what I'm getting at on that.
Yeah, see if they agree to that.
Let's, let's give him just a few more seconds to talk to his client.
Commissioner, can I just have one more, one more second, make sure we're on the same page?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner New, can you restate your, your proposed condition?
Um, just that the elimination of the ability to do multifamily as defined in the ordinance text, which my understanding is if it's three or, three or more, on one lot. Three or more residences on one lot. So that, to me, is condos and apartment complexes and quadplexes and things like that.
I think what I'm hearing is that we would be open to a condition that, that, a recommendation with a condition that apartment-style multifamily not be allowed on that, within that assemblage, but what I heard Ms. Leaf say earlier is that, and, and it was, what, what I am given to understand the ordinance says is if you have, if you have the same dimensions of a plot of land, and you put, and you carve them up in fee simple, and you put attached townhomes on them, those are not multifamily. But if you were to have the same dimension plot of land, and you put, you, you put duplexes or you put townhomes on them in multiple units per this same geographic area, that's multifamily.
That is correct.
Correct.
Okay, so I, I think...
And I think in townhomes, if, I know on St. Thomas this is true, but you can correct me, Ms. Leaf, there is some spacing requirements and...
Spacing and staggering and, and contiguous limitations, like, lots of stuff like that, so. So, it, if, John, if you wanna come up here, so, so I think as, as we understand it, you know, we would be comfortable with a condition that prohibits sort of multifamily apartments. But if it's, it's based, you know, under general residential, you know, you do have flexibility. And as I've said consistently tonight, and as I understand, you know, my client's position and what they wanna achieve with this lot, with this assemblage, is we do wanna maintain flexibility for all the reasons we've talked about at length tonight in this area. So, I, I think they are comfortable, right, with, with forego, or agree into a condition that multifamily apartment-style homes not be allowed, or that they would not, they would not seek to develop those types of housing products there. But I don't, but agreeing to blanket, I, I think the, it's hard to say here tonight at a planning commission meeting, you know, with specificity, what type of condition is gonna be appropriate, you know, five to ten to fifteen years from now on this, on this tract of land, so, you know, I, I, I think we're all comfortable giving up the ability to put multifamily apartments on this tract.
So, single family residential attached, i.e. townhomes where they have separate, they can purchase their townhome individually.
But not necessarily individually platted. You know, we have not concluded enough research for us to determine exactly what the nature of the concept plan will become. And we are comfortable prohibiting...
Sir, excuse me just a moment, would you please announce your name for us, please?
John Reehl, R.I.E.H.L., representing ORP Investments.
Thank you very much.
We would be comfortable prohibiting rental properties, garden apartments, such as Mitchell-Davenport, built on the property next door to the one we're proposing, and we would like to preserve our right to present a plan for townhomes not necessarily individually platted.
Would that not be an apartment complex, that or not, maybe a complex, but a, I guess, a smaller version, I guess?
Well, for garden apartments, I see as more vertical construction, you know, multi-story, three, four stories, such as the one that is our neighbor, and that's, that's not what we envisioned for this property.
Right, I'm just not sure how to separate the two on that.
I think, and, I think the problem with general residential is just if, if, if the apartment complex is not, kinda idea is not limited, then it, you know, the density can get a lot greater. I would assume there might be some financial reasons. So I know we, like, approved a complex off of the spur down towards 99, that they, they did it all, like, it could be townhome individual lots, but they didn't do that piece. It was zoned that they, I don't know if you remember, it's past the police station, I think.
The villas.
Yeah, they were, they...
It's condominium.
No, no, not those, this is more recent, they were, and, you know, where they, they built it just like it could be done into, to townhome lots, but they kept it all one piece, 'cause it made financial sense to do that at that point, but they might one day sell it as townhomes. But, I mean, that's my concern, is if we don't limit, I just, I don't want us to get to, to, you know, two hundred and seventy-five or three hundred residents on this property, that's, you know, and I think, I know it's quick, it's hard to do the math and figure out right now, so, I mean, I don't know if it makes more sense to defer it or, or see if y'all wanna defer it, or if you want us to try to cobble together something that makes sense.
Quick question, so I, I guess what Mr. Reehl's proposing, and I just wanna make sure we're clarifying this, so similarly with like Southport, so that was developed as a, I guess, multifamily development, right? It was townhomes. At that point, it just didn't have the imaginary line that broke it up into fee simple lots, it's still the same use. And then now they're looking to subdivide that. I think that's the, the position that he's in, is limiting it just to multifamily garden-style apartments as the condition, but still allowing the, the townhome development, if it were developed as one piece of property that's not fee simple, which I guess at that point would still be multifamily use, but just not having the fee simple lot at that point. That's the flexibility that he's looking for at this point, and the specificity on the use that he's looking to not, which I think you were bringing up, is the, the apartment style. So I don't know if that's a condition that can be placed, more specific, multifamily apartments, 'cause I think that was your biggest concern, I believe.
But would you propose that those buildings meet the same...
They would, they would still have to meet the, the offset requirements, no less than three, no more than ten, whether it's multifamily or fee simple lots. That's still a requirement of the townhome development, whether it's platted or a site plan that would have to come before y'all as an approval. So the difference there is...
All right, Mr. Frank, we fix and make a proposal to you.
Okay.
And I, I don't know the direction that this thing goes into if our hand is forced tonight, so please listen very closely, Commissioners.
Well, I, I think the additional information that he gave at the, at the end of that was very helpful.
Okay.
Kinda took some of the concern away, impact to the neighborhood, character, neighbors by, by volunteering to limit, and whether they're fee simple, individual underneath, or one property, it's still gonna give same number of inhabitants and... or one property, it's still going to give same number of inhabitants in each dwelling, it's going to give the same appearance, it's not going to go to apartment-style living, which I think is a lot of the concern that some have shared. So I think that helped clarify for me.
Yeah, that's correct. Whether it's one site, the site plan that would be presented to y'all to be approved as townhome development, that's a rental product, or platted, that townhome use is still the same, the density's still the same, it's just the process we have to go to and the classification is multifamily. The, the big thing that he's agreeable to, Mr. Reehl and Ms. Reehl, is no apartment garden-style apartments, which would then increase the density closer to what that maximum is on the GR, which is why it's in there as a use.
Okay.
All right. Y'all through with Mr. Franks?
I think so.
Thank you, Wesley.
Thank you, Mr. Reehl.
All right, talk to me, Commissioners.
I'm going to give it a stab.
This is the- Thank you.
Just to see, um, so I move to recommend approval of ZM-25-31 with the following modifications or conditions. The only allow multifamily development would be townhome-style construction that would meet all the ordinance guidelines of townhomes.
Okay.
That, besides the having, um, this, but not having to be, have individually platted lots underneath those units, you know?
But also-
Yeah, but also single, but that would just limit the, the multifamily piece of the GR zoning, you got, no?
Ms. Leaf, you understand, did you understand all that recommendation?
Already?
Yes, um, but I just wanted to clarify, so when you say townhouse style as the only, would you allow, like, detached, single family? I don't know if you're familiar with River Ford, that's going in off of Canal Road right now, so that's detached, but it's a multifamily product, but there.
All right, so let me do the opposite. So, um, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of ZM-25-31 with the following modification or condition, which is that no apartment-style, um, flat units would be allowed under the multifamily piece.
Okay.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's good.
Townhome-style construction is what you're still pushing for?
Yeah, except for she said you could have, like, more, like, single-family units, multiple of them on a single lot.
Right.
So we don't necessarily want to limit that.
Townhome-style development without individual lots? Is-
Well, I think the problem is if I say that, then if he decides to take 10 acres and put 30, let's just say, 30 individual completely detached, but he wants them all on one lot, not, not individually deeded, then you're eliminating that if you say townhome, because those will be considered multifamily too because they're not all individually deeded lots, right? That would be-
Right, yeah, and I think what you're trying to do is just, just in this box of multifamily, you know, no apartment style, I mean, that's the only style, so it's really, you know, yeah, different units on different levels instead of a townhouse or other type where there's one unit is, I mean, maybe multi-story, one unit, but you're not going to have different units on different levels.
I just want to be clear so it's not confused later on when, if it's two years, three years down the road, somebody brings it up and they say, "Well, we're going to do this because you said we couldn't," you know, it's allowed under the GR, is all, so...
Well, I mean, I think that's the intent, but I didn't really think about that you could, I mean, I think about, like, in, I think in Statesboro, they, you know, they can have one road have six, eight, I forget what they call it, courtyard, something, but eight freestanding units that don't touch at all, but they're all owned by the same person, and they're not on deeded lots, they're on one big lot. Which is what I think they're saying they want the ability to do, is, is be, to possibly build things, duplexes or single-family, or not single, but, you know, freestanding houses as well as townhomes on one single piece of property.
Could, could it be defined as single-family residential, including attached, but no apartments with that, or, um...
They'd still have to have individual lots, right?
Yeah, and I think because the GR does kind of break it all down to, like, single-family, multifamily, townhouse, um, like, attached, um, I don't know what the other use was, I'll bring that up back up. So, I mean, I think this, I mean, this sounds like this, I mean, your description of an apartment-style units, um, are you, Commissioner, are you concerned that that, that description may not be cleared down the road? Someone comes in and says, you know, "I'm trying to do this," you know, is it, is it clear what an apartment-style unit might be? That that would be the only one that's not allowed?
I guess you could have a, uh, single-family apartment, right, one unit? I, I'm, I'm just asking a question as the chairman. Is this something that we need to defer and let's let the county, let's let the county commissioners, let's let the attorneys get together and figure out the best avenue for us to move forward? I'm confident there's at least one or two more. I'm very confused now, I'll be perfectly honest with you. We've went back and forth in so many directions. Hell, I, I, I do this for a living and I ain't even sure what a multifamily is now. That's what I do, and I'm not sure that-
Multi-residents on one lot.
Yeah, I, I mean, is this what, um, I, I, and like I say, I'm just shooting this out here as the chairman, is this something that we need to defer and let the powers-to-be get this worked out and give us some direction? Mr. Attorney, Mr. Franks, um, where, where do we need to go? Because we continue to, to push this around, we've been talking about this for like an hour and 15 minutes now. We've got to make some kind of headway in one direction or another.
Right.
And, and the last, the last thing that I want to do is hurt that gentleman from developing his property the way he wants to do it, but I don't, I don't want to put handcuffs on him either.
And it feels like the, the planning commission and, and the developers team, I think, I think you're, you're on the same page with what, you know, what you're willing to, what you're interested in doing as a condition and what they're willing to accept as a condition. I think what maybe we're stuck on is the actual just definition of what it is that would not be allowed, like, what are we exactly defining that as?
Do we have the ability to say that that verbiage needs to be figured out before the county commission meeting? Or does it really, does our exact motion need to be what they vote on?
I mean, the exact motion, I mean, that will be what goes to them as your recommendation, but they, but they can change that. I mean, if they, if they feel, well, I mean, they may not accept it, or they may go a different direction with it too, but they could also change the wording of that, if that's something that they're, you know, if they're feeling like, "I might not be clear on what this is, but we want to do something similar," they could change the wording at that stage. So it's really what, I mean, what you as a commission feel comfortable, if you feel like this describes what your, you know, what it is.
So if I said that, um, it is no multifamily that is multi-story, that multi-story attached that are flat-living units. I mean, that's what we're trying to eliminate.
Yeah, this would make it easier for a zoning code had a definition of apartment units, and it doesn't, and so I already checked that. So unfortunately, we're kind of stuck with this multifamily, which is pretty, um, broad.
Aaron?
Yes.
Where do we need to go from here, sir?
I think I understand what Commissioner Newt is, is trying to get to, and we can, you know, if the MVC would like to vote on it tonight, we can sort this out before the next board commissioners meeting, and I'll get together with Mr. Harris, and we'll make sure that wording's correct. And if we can't do it, then we can remand it back down to MVC, but I, I do think I understand, like Ms. Leaf is saying, I understand where y'all are going, and I understand where they're going, so we can work out that wording and make sure we get there, and if we don't, we can remand it back.
Okay, thank you, Aaron.
So, we don't have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
All right. All right, somebody tell me what the first motion was.
Yeah, if you can repeat that for the record, just since there was a lot of discussion.
I'm thoroughly, I'll be honest, I'm thoroughly confused. Please tell us what the motion was again.
All right, uh, I move to reman, to recommend approval of ZM-25-31 with the following modifications or conditions. In regards to multifamily structures, no multi-story attached units, which are a, where the units are flats. Hence, an apartment building, i.e. an apartment building.
That was our motion, and we have a second on that motion. So, now we need to have discussion, Commissioners. Good, just for clarification, by flat, you're saying no residences above each other?
Right.
On that, okay, that's, that's the clarification I want.
So do you need me to amend that motion?
No, you said that's what-
They're still going to get together.
Yeah.
Right, they're, they're going to work the wording out.
Correct.
Better define, I guess.
Yeah.
Any additional discussion, Commissioners? All right, let's have a vote. All in favor? Again, it's six-zero. All right, everybody, people that's concerned about this Belle Farm development rezon, again, we're just a recommendation body for the county commission. This is going before the county commission, I assume, at the next regular meeting, is that correct, Ms. Leaf? County commission next meeting?
Yes, uh, December 18 is when this will be.
So, that's where all the people that's in opposition's focus needs to be. All right, let's move to the last item on the agenda, which is SP-25-36, 251 Perry Lane Site Plan. Consider a site plan approval for approximately 27,665 square-foot expansion of existing building, Dobbs Equipment, at 251 Perry Lane Road. The property is zone basic industrial parcel 03-05489, David Graffis, Gray's Engineering Consultant Incorporated, agent for DJD Southeast Real Estate Holdings LLC.
Good evening, Christopher Carey, Senior Planner. Before you tonight, we have an application of site plan approval for an industrial structure at 251 Perry Lane Road. Here's the site. It is located along Perry Lane Road, sandwiched between Perry Lane and the railroad, and right here is the intersection of 341 and Perry Lane Road. This project is proposed to be phased, so it is a 27,000-square-foot total commercial industrial complex. And right here is your phasing. So the first phase will be the new building to the east of the construction site and the existing building in operation. The second phase will be the new building and the existing building to be demolished, and the final phase will be the new building addition added to the west of the site of construction. So here's the site again, Dobbs Equipment, John Deere Contractor, and the intersection of Perry Lane and 341 in the background. And here is your proposed site plan. And here is your close-up. So right here is phase one, and then phase two will be the demolition of the existing building, which is located right here, approximately in this area, and the latter phasing being the remaining structures. And these are your possible motions, and that is all from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Any questions for Mr. Carey? All right. Do we have an agent on hand?
Good evening. My name is David Graffis, and I'm with Gray Engineering, the civil engineer for this project. And with me to answer any questions tonight is the, the actual user, representative for the owner, Jerry Patton, as well as the building architect is here as well. And just to reiterate what, what staff has, has said in its presentation, it's really one project, I know when we say phases, that could imply, well, we're going to do one phase and then try to quit after that, but really, it's a single project, it's just done in three parts chronologically, as it was explained by staff. So, again, we're here to answer any questions, specifics you have on the site plan, as it pertains to the building or the business. Thank you.
Quick question, well, first of all, statement, y'all have earned your pay before you ever got to the podium.
Not, not a problem, we, we go through this all the time. I sit through many, many meetings, as, as the chairman said, it's, it's our business to do this.
I saw it's all underground storage for the water.
It is.
And is the first building going to be, like, it's larger than the existing building right now?
Uh, it is.
The first phase?
Yes, yes.
No, no other questions? Thank you. All right. All I'd like to say, as much money as I've spent at John Deere in my career, y'all could build twice as big a building, I believe. That's an expensive place. All right, um, I got to open a public, thank you, sir, thank you. I got to open the public hearing portion. Anybody that would like to speak in opposition of this site plan, please step forward. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. I'm going to close that, and anyone that would like to speak in favor, please step forward. Hearing none, seeing none, the public hearing portion is closed. Commissioners, talk to me.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend approval of SP-25-36 as presented.
Now, second motion.
All right, we got a first and a second, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Six-zero. And, gentlemen, y'all's new building, in all reality, should be on Highway 82, where y'all first proposed it. But anyway, that's neither here nor there, I just wanted to say that, as, you know, it would have been a much better location for y'all, I believe. But, uh, thank you so much for being our community, thank you for employing people, and, um, y'all have at it?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, we ready to adjourn?
Yep.
Ms. Leaf? Uh, Mr. Attorney, are you satisfied? Aaron?
Uh, I'm here, no further business from me.
Thank you, Aaron, have a good night, sir. This meeting is adjourned. This meeting is adjourned.